All right. Under Mayor's announcements, Jeff asked me to pass along, he was very, very sorry, he wasn't able to be here tonight. He got caught up in some work matters. He didn't think he'd be able to make it back in time. Hold on one second. Can everybody still hear me?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I got a phone call on my phone. Who knew? Secondly, I would like to pass along his message that he is very proud of the city staff on how hard everyone's working and how we're really just rolling up our sleeves and figuring things out. And I'd like to second it personally as well. It's been very impressive what's been going on. So Jeff's not able to be here tonight. I hope that everybody will put up with my technology issues as we make it through the meeting. I'd now like to open it up for citizen participation. Since we are conducting an online meeting tonight because of the current COVID-19 pandemic and to comply with the orders and rules on the stay at home and social distancing, we have citizens in attendance both via video conference and on the telephone. We will start the citizen participation with any citizen on our video conference platform who wishes to speak to anything not on the agenda. The way this will work is the citizen who wishes to speak will need to click the, on the raise hand button in the Zoom app to be called upon. Josh will then unmute that citizen. They will then need to state their name and address and they will be given five minutes to speak. We will continue this until all those who wish to speak via our video conference platform have had a chance and opportunity to speak. If you're on the phone, we will get to you next. So Josh, if there's anybody raising their hand, now would be the time to let them speak. Okay. Seeing none. Next, we'll follow the same procedure with citizens who are participating via telephone. I will ask Josh to unmute all those participating via telephone and anyone who wishes to speak to anything not on the agenda, please state your name and your address and you will be given five minutes to speak. Josh, is there anybody there that wishes to speak? Okay. I'm hearing none. So we're going to move on. Before we get started with the agenda items that require a vote, I would like to ask all council members who made a motion and those who second a motion to state their name after the motion or second so that Laura can accurately reflect in the minutes who made the motions. You'll recall last time it was a little bit confusing who was making the motions. So if I was going to motion, I'd just say, motion Matt Russell. Everybody understand?
Yep.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Okay. The consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion Gary Wilson.
Second Eric Franklin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Motion carries and I believe, I'm counting the... Do we have seven? Am I counting correctly?
Are you counting Jerry?
One, two, three, four. I am. Five, six. Brandon Self is not here if I'm counting this correctly. All right. So motion passes seven to zero. Sorry, I have to flip through pages on my iPhone. All right. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules. We've got city council meetings coming up on April 21st, 2020, and city council meeting May 5th on 2020, planning and zoning on April 13th, 2020. At this point, Mr. Cameron, everything's still scheduled by Zoom. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Excellent. All right. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Before we start, I would like to remind everyone that since we are conducting an online meeting because of the current COVID-19 pandemic, under the sunshine law, only those council members in attendance via video are allowed to vote on items that require a roll call vote. Starting off with 20-14, I need a motion and second for the second reading of Bill 20-14 by title only.
Motion Charlie Breschers.
Second Jim Dykman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance by title? Laura, if you're there.
Trying to. There we go. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of a cost apportionment agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for sidewalk and aesthetic improvements related to US 60 and Missouri 174 intersection improvements.
Mr. Nelson gave you an overview at the last meeting and is attending again over the phone. Should you have any questions about the bill? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 20-14.
Motion Jones.
Second Gary Wilson.
All right. Now we need to move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Self, oh, excuse me. Councilmember Breschers.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to new business. The first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing. The way the public hearing will work is that I will read the title of the ordinance, which is the subject of the public hearing, and then open the public hearing to allow all those who wish to speak in opposition, five minutes each, to speak in opposition, five minutes each. Then I will continue the public hearing to all those who wish to speak in favor for five minutes each. Number one, a public hearing of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri regarding approving the annexation of approximately 2.9 acres of land located at the 7500 block of West Farm Road 174 and adjacent right of way. I will now open the public hearing to those who wish to speak in opposition of this item. First, for the citizens who are using the Zoom app, just like in the citizen participation, please raise your hand via the raise hand button to be called upon to speak. Please remember to state your name and address and you will have five minutes to speak. Josh, do we have anybody?
We do not.
Excellent. Now I will ask that the citizens who are participating via telephone be unmuted so that any of those citizens can speak. Again, please remember to state your name and address and you will have five minutes to speak. So these are people in opposition via telephone. Hearing no one. I will now open the public hearing to those who wish to speak in favor of this item. First, for the citizens who are using Zoom, please hit the raise your hand button, state your name and address. Seeing none. Now, now I will ask for those citizens participating via telephone. I'm sorry, what was that? Sorry, I thought I had some feedback there. Now we'll move on to the telephones. Any people interested in speaking in favor for this on the telephones? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing. Moving on to item number two, 20-15, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 20-15 by title only.
Motion Gary Wilson.
Second Eric Franklin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the annexation of approximately 2.9 acres of land located at the 7500 block of West Farm Road 174 and adjacent right of way.
Ms. Haynes is here to give an overview here virtually. Are there any... Ma'am, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening. The City of Republic's Community Development Department received a voluntary annexation application from the Raider Trust for approximately 2.9 acres of land. This is located directly east of the recently annexed 20.5 acre Raider Trust property on West Farm Road 174. City Water and Sanitary Sewer Service is available in proximity to the property. Subsequent review of water, sewer, stormwater will be considered at the time of application for rezoning and/or development. The subject parcel is compact and contiguous with the city limits of the City of Republic as the subject parcel is surrounded by properties located in the city to the north and west. The future land use designation of the subject parcel is low-density residential, which includes single-family residential development at 1.6 or 126 units per acre in neighborhood compatible institutional reusances. The annexation of approved by city council will effectively zone the property agricultural or AG in accordance with city code. Staff has reviewed the annexation request and we are recommending approval based on its consistency with the city's future land use map and comprehensive plans as an area of future residential growth for the City of Republic. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next reading. Moving on to 20-16, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 20-16 by title only.
Motion Eric Franklin.
Motion second Jim Dykman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the final plat of the Monte Cristo Phase Eight subdivision.
Ms. Haynes is here to give an overview?
Thank you. The final plat of Monte Cristo Phase Eight conforms to the preliminary plat of the Monte Cristo subdivision, first approved by city council back in March of 2006. Phase Eight will legally divide approximately 5.7 acres of land into 21 residential lots and includes the dedication of right of way and utility and stormwater easements. City staff has reviewed the final plat and has determined that it is in substantial conformity to the requirements of the preliminary plat in addition to the requirements of city code section 410 subdivision regulations and Article 5 major subdivision final plat. Staff recommends approval of the Monte Cristo Phase Eight final plat.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none. Please remember again, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. We're rolling right along to 20-17. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 20-17 by title only.
Motion Gary Wilson.
Second Jones.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the budget for fiscal year 2020.
We have Mr. Cameron here to give us an overview. David, what do you have to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So each year, as you know, we already have a periodic budget amendment in place, but obviously this year is substantially different with COVID-19. And so several weeks ago, we began working, I believe it was probably the second week of March, we began considering scenarios related to the budget. As you know, we're heavily reliant on sales tax. There were three stimulus packages that were passed, none of which provide assistance for local government. But thankfully, as you all recall, our 2020 budget is actually lower than our 2019 budget. And so there is a lot of provisions. We paid off a lot of debt. So I put together, working with Debbie and staff, just to gather some scenarios and I want to be really clear upfront, there is no crystal ball to forecast or project what those losses on sales tax are going to be. So I want to be really clear about what I say and those that are watching or how it's perceived, that I'm not forecasting a certain loss. But we ran a model if we were to lose significant amounts of sales tax revenue. Some of the comments that I've fielded or statements I've heard in the world around us, I guess, in local government, you might see anywhere from 15% to 30% reduction in sales tax numbers. So the model that we ran was, well, let's ramp it up and try it a little bit harder. So what we put together was a scenario, and again, that I want to be very clear that people are like, you're saying we're going to lose 40%? No, I wanted to test it against what would happen if we saw those time extended. So we ran, so we were on a 90-day delay, just in case you're wondering. So it takes 90 days from the day of the transaction to receipt to our funds. So everything you see this month is not reflective of the last month's spending. And so we're projecting in June and July, that's when we're going to start to see a decline in our sales tax revenue. But what that number is, I've seen it pretty healthy, you know, it doesn't look like, you know, drive-throughs still seem full. There was a lot of business still going on. It has slowed down substantially in the last week. But so we forecasted in June, a 30% reduction, July, August, September, 40% reductions, October, November, 30, and then 20. That is an extreme case, but we wanted to test it to see what would our current financial position look like and could it handle it? And so what that equated to was it would reflect a $745,000, I rounded these up, decrease in the general fund, 247,000 in street, and $480,000 in parks. And so that scenario played itself out. So we didn't use the 15 to 30, we used 30, 40, 40, 40, 30, 30, 20 through the end of the year. The other thing that is, that it's got to be well noted is, I don't believe that the economy is going to recover quickly to that extent where people are going to resume to 2019 or even 2020 spending levels. So we have to consider what the sales tax levels could be when there is a decline in spending. And so we took a very, very healthy approach and aggressive approach as to what that scenario could look like and put together a budget amendment that allows us, and I'll go through each one of these things, but it's to create a special, an account, it's called a sustainability account. And what that is for is to set aside money if we have to subsidize and basically feed money back into the budget as necessary. So to give you an idea, we keep 100 days' operating cash in the budget at all times for a rainy day, if you will, I guess tornado or a pandemic. And so that represents about 1.8 million and we're sitting at about 2.3 million now. So as I talk about numbers, there's one number that I want to keep in mind, nothing in this plan at this stage takes us below our 100 days' operating cash. So we still preserve the 100 days' operating cash in this scenario. But what it does is like, if you'll recall last year, we did not, we did not meet our budget spending wise. So we actually moved $389,000 from 2019 into the 2020 budget reserve. So there's that amount of money that's there. I'll talk about it in the resolution that's following this, but we suspended the hiring of all positions. So basically, if there was a vacant position, so like the community development position, director position, the assistant in that area, there are vacant police officer positions that were, that just trying to fill them, we've suspended. Any new positions that were added to the budget have been suspended, along with a number of capital projects and things that we're anticipating. That amount in and of itself equaled up to right at $600,000, which again is in the resolution that follows. So if you just take the cutting of the expenses in 2020 plus that 389,000, we're at $900,000, which exceeds the amount that I'm projecting in the worst-case scenario. So we went a little bit further in this ordinance and what this does is it unrestricted, so this is not money that was designated by taxes, this is general fund money, it unrestricts cash accounts that we've restricted on. It allows us to put it into an account to feed back into the budget later date if necessary. I'll go through each one of those. As I mentioned, there was a, there was a carryover from 2019 into the 2020 budget, that money would go in there. One thing that would also go in there would be any, to date we're 9%, about 8% to 9% year to date on sales tax over budget. So we've actually had a very good year to date. We're anticipating again that to spike down or to decline. So we're going to put any additional to that account as well. But what this ordinance does is it takes, I'm going to go through this on page two of the ordinance, starting with section one, it establishes the financial sustainability account. It's not a fund, it's an account. So it does not have to be necessarily accounted for different, it's just an account that we could look for or use, like a savings account at home. On the general fund, we would undesignate $34,216 from the police equipment and vehicles account, $76,749 from the fire equipment and vehicles account, $6,205 from the EMA, which is the emergency management account, equipment and vehicles. Then in the general fund, we currently have 219,348 designated to the operating and cash reserves account. In the general, we also have $318,687 in the capital rep, in the account. All the other things that we did, as I mentioned during the budget cycle, one thing that we do, because we've got so much building in the community over the last two years, we've built a building account that cannot go into the general fund to offset the operations of police, fire, admin, legal, ID, HR. So what we did is, what I'm asking for in this ordinance is to dip into that reserve to pay for the entire funding of the building department that would free up the cash position in the general fund. So basically, it's not a swap, it's just saying, we're going to redo the budget to say, that money, we're going to pull out that reserve account this year to pay for that position. So it frees up an additional 65,000. And again, I hope we don't have to use it, but at the same time, what it does, it goes into an account and as money is needed, or if we see a decline, if it's only 5%, if it's 7%, if it's 15%, we're cash, we're in a position where we'd have about 1.8 million dollars of cash in addition to the 1.8 million dollars of 100 days' operating cash. In essence, if in a world, worst-case scenario, we have about 3.6 million dollars and that would deplete everything. But again, what's been put together is about 745,000. Yeah. On the general fund, street, would it have to cut its costs or we would not be pulling out the general fund to subsidize street? And parks has put together their financial plan that would help offset the losses there. But again, this is the worst-case scenario, but what this ordinance is doing and this budget amendment is unclassifying and unrestricting what we've self-restricted into an account that we can backfeed to as necessary. But I suspect that this will carry on into 2021. I do not believe this is just for a 90-day cycle, but this has not changed our, anything that we're doing with our current staff. The objective from day one was to keep our current staff on staff to establish assurance that there was no layoffs, there was no cut at this time, that we have a position that we can sustain the operation of the city and continue to move forward. So I'll take any questions related to the budget or any ideas or suggestions or thoughts that you had, I'll be more than happy to take those at this time.
I'm not hearing any questions. Are we still mulling it over or are we good to move on, guys?
Move on.
All right. Please remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, as I'm sure they'll come up in our minds as we think about this, please get with Mr. Cameron before the next meeting. I'd like to now move on to resolutions. This is 20-R-08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the City of Republic's COVID-19 Financial Sustainability and Recovery Plan. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution that 20-R-08.
Motion Jim Dykman.
Second Eric Franklin.
Okay. Mr. Cameron's here to give an overview. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one thing that's important was to get council support instead of the plan that we're putting together. I did not believe it was, it would be put together a plan that didn't also have a recovery phase to it as well. It also has a spending phase. So it talks about, this is how we're going to designate the money, this is how we would spend the money. But it also talks about what we would put back into place and in what orders we would put those back into place as the economy begins to recover. But not knowing exactly what that is, we're taking an extremely conservative approach to those things, but it allows for us to go into how we would spend, but also at the same time, how we recover. Because I want the employees to understand, number one, that this plan puts them in their priority to make sure we keep the current people that we have, that there is assurance that you're number one on that priority list because in the uncertainty that's going around and you see the unemployment claims rising, the very reason that we have a 1.8 million dollar cash position in addition to another 1.8 million dollar cash position was the employees that have helped us achieve those levels. And so when we put together, again, a budget that's less than last year, our employees made that happen. And so there is a commitment, and I know that's the same way with this council, is to make sure that that takes place. And so I wanted to make sure that not only do we communicate with the staff, but also the council and the community that we have a plan now, and it's not something that we just, we don't plan for scenarios that you don't anticipate. We've been working on this for a couple of weeks and we believe this is a great plan that not only we want to provide, we want to provide it publicly, but people can see how we're sustaining and we're not going to impose more rate increases or something to the community. So there would be that speculation, so if there's a decrease in revenue or you're going to ask for more money on our water, sewer bill, the answer is no. We have positioned ourselves, the staff is working very hard to minimize costs, cut those costs, but unfortunately, to cut those costs, if you look at Exhibit A, there's training, there's overtime, there's police positions, there's a fire position, there's a community development position, there's a number of positions that are just not being filled, there's the paralegal that we included in this year's budget that are just not going to get hired at this time and most likely will not happen in 2020 at all unless the economy recovers quicker than normal. It was important to put together a plan that we could follow, that you could understand this is how we're going to do it. And I'm very proud of the staff that have worked together to bring this to you. We prepared for this, we put it together, we're going to execute this plan, we're going to recover. I believe this is, I believe we're positioned extremely well. I think by reducing our expenses for the last several years and paying off debt, we positioned ourselves very well. And I just, your consideration and your support for this resolution, it allows, it still allows the control for me to make spending decisions. We'll still follow those procurement policies, we'll be scrutinized a little bit more, but we still want business to go on. We still have a lot of business going on. And so that's what's before you. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, Exhibit A outlines the cuts that we're making this year that are about 600,000 and it kind of outlines, in the previous ordinance outlines the cash position by how we'll achieve it, but it represents about 1.8 million dollars that we can use if necessary in addition to 1.8, but that would take another council ordinance or action at that stage. But I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
David, you did too good of a job explaining it. Apparently there aren't any questions.
Well, I wish it wasn't something we were explaining, but it's important that you, and I appreciate the freedom that we have to do our job to provide this. I think it's essential that our employees, the mayor and the council and the community understand that we've been pretty adamant and pretty passionate about having a plan and communicating that plan with everyone.
You know, in reviewing Exhibit A, it really looks like there are cuts from across the board. Every department's giving some stuff up here, it looks like. Is this all the meat that's on the bone or could we go deeper if we need to?
Well, what's not included in there is, and I apologize, and I'll provide it, it should have been included on me, is the parks actually cut in addition to that, that's not listed on there. Some, I mean, they have a scenario that they could run, that they could reduce their expenses if that scenario plays out, plus the street department, an additional $275,000. But the last resort, Matt, that I placed was any type of across the board or any type of layout. That was, there is, there is in the recovery phase, if you look in there, and I'm very reluctant to even go down this path, but I want to show you that it was in, or the sustainability phase, section four, the last resort, the city will consider reduction in payroll and staffing levels. We would go through 1.8 million dollars worth of funding to achieve that type of approach. But I've been through a similar situation when I was in Salam Springs where we saw a significant reduction in revenue that was unexpected in one fiscal year. And what I learned from that scenario is if it cannot just affect one or two, it would go across everywhere to sustain your team and ride out the storm. And so I learned a lot in that scenario that has carried over into this one. That's why it's probably listed as number seven. You cut as far as you can before you start addressing the staff. You cut as far as you can before you start addressing the staff.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussions?
I do have one question from Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Jones.
Uh, the, you know, I saw that, you know, pretty large deferments in funds from both police and fire for equipment purchases and things. Were there any equipment identified during this analysis where um, it absolutely could not defer the funds and they, we, we need to purchase because they couldn't adequately do their jobs, or are both chiefs um confident that the departments will be sustainable with those cuts?
So, great question. So what I love about this ordinance and the resolution is it still allows me the authority. It's not really saying that we're going to, there's nothing in the ordinance that says I'm suspending spending. It says if they need something, if it's a weapon, best, they're going to get the resources they need to do the job. And I don't care if it's masks, there's nothing that says we won't stop spending on certain areas to protect them in general. It's just, we're going to, we're using these as guides, it's not necessarily that it's something that is being approved, it's just, we're looking for ways to cut. And if we got to find some other way other than affecting our public safety officials with the tools they need, that will get cut. The other piece, John, which I failed to mention, and I, and I apologize, there is some spending we're going to do on the IT side to shore up our connectivity and our redundancy to fiber that allows us, this is network goes down because we're reliant so much upon it. So I've authorized um, some equipment purchases and some upgrades to our system that were budgeted. So some of the capital will proceed forward to shore up the IT side as well as spending for the public safety. If there's a need, we'll spend money for it, but it'll be something that we, we're very conservative with. It's a great question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we need to take a vote on this. So all in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron?
I get it again.
You do.
So first and foremost, I want to thank Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Reshears. Uh, as many of you know, today is election day, uh, that was supposed to be election day, and that was moved to June second, and so they have graciously agreed to hang with us so we can continue this on behalf of the community, so it's greatly appreciated. Um, I know there's a lot of work that goes into it in time, especially during this time making decisions. I, I greatly appreciate uh, you guys hanging on and, and working with us, your support. Um, I want to thank the community. This has been a a really interesting time, and the phone calls you take uh can be quite interesting, the concerns you take. Um, I want to say there's been a lot of stability in the, in the communications that we take at the city and the way people are handling, handling this situation. Um, we've shut down our offices. Um, and I've just seen, you know, the, the communication with my office. Uh, the mayor and I take a number of calls um, and, and comments and concerns, and we try to deal with every one of them, either himself or myself individually. And I can tell you that those conversations are extremely civil, um, understanding, clarity, people seeking clarity. And we try to do that on a case-by-case basis versus pushing out a lot of information that might be confusing. We've tried to, to kind of streamline the message so that it's not confusing to the community. Um, but I just want to thank the community for the way they've responded. Um, I mean, there's, there's always going to be challenges with it, and we feel complaints, I, I take those calls, we take them very seriously. Um, try to reach out to the businesses that maybe that, that needs some assistance or to bring clarity to the orders that have been provided, but I want to thank the community for that. Uh, I want to, you know, I, I probably should have started off with our public safety on the very first thing, but I thank you with, with, I want to thank our public safety staff and all the medical staff that are out there on the front lines. Um, it's just what they're dealing with, what they're faced with, with PPE requirements and their own personal health and safety, I just want to thank them for the work that they do. Um, and it just, try to do our best to minimize the exposure for them. I'll say this, probably the most disheartening part of this situation is probably the calls we take with people concerned that we're going to send, you know, they're going to get pulled over. Do I need to have a letter in my car? Is a police officer going to do this? I hate to put a police officer in a negative light whenever that's really not the role that we've asked them to fill. So we have not communicated, nor have we sent police officers to a business unless there's a crime being committed, and that's not the order. We ourselves, like, I've gone to businesses just to discuss, like, hey, how are you operating? I've had a call, we're not out there just looking for ways to shut somebody down, and we're not sending an officer out there to do that job. Churches are wanting to assemble in parking lots and listen to the radio, we're, we're encouraging that, as long as they're not assembling inside the building in groups of ten. But I have calls all sorts of, on, on all sorts of things, and I just appreciate the way our staff's handling, are handling it, our public safety's handling it, and the community's handling it. We'll navigate through it. Then I want to thank the staff. Um, they've done a fantastic job. I will tell you, your, your government is running every day, business is getting done every day. Calls are being taken. Uh, we're paying our bills, uh, we're having internal controls to look over our spending that's taking place. I still have to authorize it, it's all being done by telework. I know people, you know, it's, it's hard not seeing your staff, but I'm telling you, this is still going on, the internal controls are there that I'm very comfortable, that if our auditor was to look at it, which they will, they'll see that we still do business as usual and the accountability in place is necessary. And next week, um, thanks to Karen Haynes, uh, and, and her team, they're going to be conducting the first P and Z meeting via Zoom. And I want to thank Karen. Karen has stepped in for the last two months and served as the interim community development director, and we've not missed a beat. And I just appreciate the work that she and that staff has done under her leadership. And uh, but in this last week, what I've done is in the consolidation, some of the changes that have taken place, I've consolidated the efforts of the community development department. And now the community development department now houses the public works department underneath, or I guess public works comes in it. Now I've put Andrew Nelson uh over that department as a whole, so basically, community development and public works are one group now that's still with the development community that provides us some synergy, again, that we've already had. It also provides one point of contact for the development community. And I'll say this, the development has not slowed down. So it is, we're fielding phone calls with the uh COVID-nineteen and concerns, we're also dealing with development and growth and new buildings that still require P and Z, they're going to have a pretty good agenda, we're going to have a, we're going to have agenda items on our next council meeting to deal with uh, some rezoning. Um, so anyway, things are going very well. I just appreciate the platform and the work that puts all this together. Uh, but we've been, we've been working on this for several weeks, and for us to be conducting our second meeting, to see our budget revised and, and moving forward. Uh, we're staying, you know, we're leading from uh, from the front and not behind. And so I just appreciate the opportunity to lead and serve this community. It's a blessing, uh, it's a privilege. And um, I look forward to us navigating ourselves through this and being a leader, representing our region very well in this situation. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Do any council members have anything they wish to report?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Mr. Franklin, please.
Uh, thank you. Once again, uh, we thank you, Mr. Cameron, thank you all of our public staff, our public safety. I really appreciate all of your efforts, you guys are doing an outstanding job. I appreciate all of the, this response from the Republic citizens and their efforts to help control this as well. I really appreciate their social distancing and their understanding during this time. Uh, you know, hopefully we can all return to normal as quick as possible, but uh, also looking forward to the Run Retmo two thousand and twenty challenge.
Yeah.
Coming up here pretty soon. So uh, I'm signed up and I'm ready to go. If you, if you see me out there, six feet. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Is there anybody else that would like to report anything? All right, not seeing anybody else, I will adjourn this meeting. Everybody stay safe, stay healthy.